President.
Councilwoman Scott?
President.
Councilman Young?
President.
Councilman Loughran?
President.
And Mayor McCoy?
Present.
Okay, I believe we're only missing Mayor Pro Tinsley.
Thought I said her on earlier, maybe she's not unmuted.
Yeah, Derek just mentioned that she's there, she's just muted without the camera on. So she might be just tuning in on her phone.
Okay. Well, we do have a quorum, so I'm gonna go ahead with the meeting. I don't have a flag, so it's inappropriate to say the flag.
We should have one queued up.
Okay.
There it is.
Again, I'd like to welcome citizens who are viewing and taking steps perhaps participate in this meeting. Now move into announcements, and I believe we have a COVID-19 update.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Rick, Ken, David should be on, should be on. Are you guys there?
Yes, we're here. Okay, cheers.
Yes. David, can you provide an update on just the latest numbers?
Yeah, real quick, I'll be available for any questions. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Since we're in the middle of still entering numbers in, I don't want to give an update today because it's really not gonna be accurate at all. Yesterday, I believe we had around 100 cases, I kind of lost count. We've got a total of 753 active cases, and we have around 6 hospitalized. Our total case count is up to 1,374, with 612 of those recovered. As of now, we're in the middle of injury, we're at 40 cases, but that's not anything more than we're gonna be at the end of the day. I know it's five, it took another end of the day now, we're, we usually conclude about 7:00 PM, by the time we wrap up, wrap up those case counts. I don't know how, again, I've got some other notes as far as response, I can stop at numbers if you want me to stop there, that's, that's fine as well.
What is our hospitalization count?
Apparently, we have 62 Victoria County residents who are COVID positive in our, in the hospital.
So that went up 11 from yesterday.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to touch on just the latest in terms of providing an update from the policy group standpoint as well?
Well, we, the policy groups get them tomorrow and go over the numbers with Vid and Dr. McNeil. Last week, we decided we were going to have policy meetings every Wednesday, and then out of those meetings will probably come perhaps some public announcements like the judge. And Dr. McNeil and I last week, along with public service announcements to keep the pub formed where we are. And I know there's a lot of work going on with a lot of people trying to get assistance for our hospitals and so forth. So everybody's working as hard as we can to deal with the situation.
Rick, do you have anything you want to add, just on behalf of emergency management and just the overall response?
Yes, sir, because we ran the complexion walk-up test site back in June 25th and 26th. I believe everybody probably saw the numbers as they were published in the various media outlets, but we had on Thursday 747 tests that were collected and also 412 on the following day on Friday. In the total out of 1,239. Some of the numbers, when they came back, we were able to receive the data in from the Air Services and the Texas Military Department. It looks as though out of those test papers, there were 176 of cases from Victoria County alone. And then 266 were positive cases out of the 1,239, ranging with some coming from Jackson, Duwitt, Gulleah County, La Vaca County, and a few other locations. So it looks as though that 139 samples were collected, they administered with 176 of those being positive from Victoria County. Which obviously, the Epi teams here in the EOC are working through that process right now on doing case investigations. And so EOC, we're supporting the Epi teams that are here, as well as the hotline that is currently up and running. And receiving around 140 calls per day, and so it looks like we'll continue operating the hotline at least for another week or more, as there's still a lot of uncertainty there. A lot of questions from our poll, they're calling in and we're trying to answer those, so.
Great, thank you all. We also wanted to add to the agenda also as, as opportunity for council to ask any questions that you might have related to COVID, the response. Any specific information that you would want to be included in the updates? I think at this point, I think we can all recognize that COVID is something we're gonna be dealing with for quite some time. And so it'd be appropriate for us to get a sense from council on the facts of updates that you'd like to receive during this part of the meeting moving forward, and we can kind of pair accordingly. So I'd welcome a feedback either now or later, but we do plan on hopefully Rick and David on on a recurring basis to talk about COVID. Any questions?
Just like to thank you for the information that you're providing. I've kind of been a little lost what else might be useful, I'll think about it, but thank you for this information.
If I think there's something you need to know, just know, and remember that we have a policy meeting every Wednesday morning. To see if you can share your thoughts with Jesus, it would be nice to know.
Okay. Mayor, you could probably move on to your census stuff.
I'm gonna give a brief update on the census. The 2020 census is currently underway, and we ask all Victorians to participate and be counted. The census provides vital information to our community. It determines how many representatives each state gets in trust, and is used to redraw boundaries. Communities will sense the statistics to plan for a variety of resident needs, including new roads, schools, and emergency services, among many others. Businesses use census data to determine where to open places to shop or to set up businesses. Each year, the federal government distributes hundreds of billions of dollars to states and communities based on Census Bureau data. And continuing to receive this federal money is in to Victoria. Victoria is performing well compared to surrounding counties, but there's always room for improvement. In 2010, the final self-response rate for the city of Victoria was 67.7%. Between now and October, goal is to beat that number. Currently, Victoria is at 56.7%, which is just above the state average of 56.5, but behind the rest of the country at 61.7%. The census response deadline has extended to October 31st, 2020, and census takers will begin following up with houses who did not respond in mid-August. Victorians can visit victoriaaccounts.com for information, but I can't stress any stronger the importance of being counted and what it means to our community. Thank you. With that, we will now move on into citizens' communication. If there's citizens out there who wish to, I think the term is to stand up or acknowledge you want to contribute to the meeting.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, citizens would raise their hand virtually, and I'll turn it over to James to confirm if anybody has done so.
Okay.
I see no, no one wanting to speak.
Okay, none. I don't think we have any public and employee recognition night, so I'll move on to items from council. Is there any items from council? Hearing none will move forward into items with public hearings.
Item C1 on the agenda, general obligation refunding bond series 2020.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. The proposed ordinance will allow the city to finance the due refunding bond series 2020 with certain parameters in place. Dusty Taylor with RBC Capital Bank will give council a brief discussion about the bond structure, the maturity, the present value savings, and the high-level parameters that are in place in the ordinance. Dusty, are you there?
Here, Gilbert.
Okay.
Afternoon, everyone, it is, it is a pleasure to be this, this afternoon. The item before you, again, is, as Gilbert stated, is ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refund on series 2020. We see the cover page of our presentation on the screen here. If we could actually go to this page in the presentation, the summary of the refunding out that we have prepared here. These refunding bonds are looking at is refinancing the city's general obligation refunding bonds series 2020. There's only a very small portion of that refunding bond, less than, actually, the final maturity now is at August 15th, 23. So what we're looking at is refinancing the final $3,655,000 series 2010 refunding bonds. And because of the absolute levels of interest rates right now that are in the market, we're looking at refinancing those and generating saves based upon current conditions. We're currently debating savings of approximately $137,179. That works out to, if you look at the cash flow saving on the lower right of the presentation, that's where we show the annualized cash flow saving. You see the column there that says net savings. We're looking at savings in each of the years, '21, '22, and '23, in the neighborhood of '47 to '43, and then $47,000 per year. I would say on average, a little over $45,000 per year of annual savings for this refinancing. Currently, the present value savings is approximately $135,900, or 3.74% of the principal amount to be refunded. The order before you tonight, all forces, the city move forward refinancing. If and only certain parameters are met for this refinancing, those include no extension of final maturity. So the refunds would have the same final maturity as these 2010 bonds will mature no later than August 15th, 2023. So, and it authorizes the city to move forward so long as there is a net present value savings of at least 2.5%. So there's got to be real savings in place prior to moving forward. Our, kind of, from here, our plan would be to put other bid specifications, put that out to a number of banks across the state. Find buyers that would be willing to buy us at the lowest price and allow the winning bidder to purchase the refunding bonds, but only get the parameters that we discussed in the parameters in this report.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Make sure, if you do want to, just make sure you're unmuted.
Right. Okay, if there's no questions?
I'm gonna adopt C1.
Second.
I will now open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone in the public wishing to speak to this matter, please do so now by alerting Mr. Foo and raising your hand on Zoom.
There are no comments.
We have no comment to the public hearing, therefore I will not close the hearing. Is there any further to say to council? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, and then if you would unmute everyone. All, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Say aye. Here's a 7-0 vote for.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to.
Yes, there are two items on the consent agenda tonight that will be approved by a single vote. They are first, adopting the minutes of regular city council meeting, held on June 16th, and the special meetings on June 22nd and June 23rd, both 2020. And the second item is approving payment for the annual toll for maintenance of Central Square Technology in the amount of $159,496.87.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Concerned? Here's we have a seven vote approval. May I move action items?
Action item E1 is approving an expenditure for a marketing study project at the Royal Airport and a budget amendment for the Victoria South Tech Development Corporation.
All right, good evening, Mayor, and this is Assistant Scars, the City Manager speaking. I'm gonna introduce Lenny here in a second and allow him an opportunity to give a presentation on the airport, but before we get to that, I want to provide a brief summary on how we got to where we are today. So many of you are aware that the Victoria South Tech Corporation has been reassessing and analyzing opportunities for more involvement on their part. And part of that effort, they're exploring branching out outside of the traditional areas that they have assisted with, and thinking more globally about their impact on economic development. As part of, of part of that process, Bill Bouchard, as President of VSTDC, put together a strategic committee that is made up of actually Councilmember Loughran and Russ Dempsey, who's one of the other members of VSTDC, and Bill. And they've developed a draft of a workup plan that chooses on a variety of different topics, from workforce development to transportation, to infrastructure, to parks, to downtown, to the airport, et cetera. And so rather than waiting until the work is finalized, the VSTDC has tried to take edge of low-hanging fruit opportunities. And all along, during the last six months, there's been a lot of progress made at the airport. And we invited Lenny to provide a presentation to VSTDC, just to educate VSTDC on a lot of the work that's going on at the airport, because quite frankly, he doesn't get talked enough. And so that got VSTDC excited about some of those opportunities, and in effect, got VSTDC interested in assisting this marketing study that Lenny will go more into. But rather than solely focusing on the marketing study, it's important that Lenny provides a holistic update to you on the airport, and then closes and bring it all together and how it's associated with that marketing study. And so, Lenny, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, man, take it.
All right, can you, can you please, next slide, please? So this, this first slide is a presentation of a current project that we have at the airport. The, between the transportation, Techstat, and the FAA have put $4 million together for the airport. At the time, what we're doing at the airport is we're, we're rehabilitating lots of pavement at the airport, including our main runway 1331, and all the taxiways at the airport and runway 1836. And we're also doing some of the apron around the terminal bill and the fixed base operator. I can tell you that the airport needed a lot of assistance with a project like this, and I wish that the $4 million would be maybe $10 million. But $10 million does the job for right now. We're getting this airport to kind of get a fixed lift. When the airport is done, a runway, or primary runway would look good, and it would give us probably like 10 to 12 years of life access. After that, we'll mostly have to go to a full reconstruction pick, which would be a pretty large grant, somewhere in the $15 million, maybe $20. But that'll be probably 10 to 12 years. For right now, this project that we have, and I just wanted to let you know, a lot, a lot of this money gets spent lonely as a way of equipment, also as a way of people that get hired for the project. And also, some of the people that come from out of town come as part of the, the project with their construction company, and they're all are staying at a hotel, and they've been staying at a local hotel since April. Can we move to the slide, please? So what do we have at the airport as airline service? You know, we got the, what's called Essential Air Service. The Essential Air Service is a program that was created back after deregulation of the air in the 1970s. Before the regulation, the, the United States control the pricing on tickets and where airlines can fly. After the regulation, the, the US government thought that some airlines will pull out of small communities, and they created this project to make sure that communities like Victoria are served by commercial service. The DOT subsidizes this airline in a tune of about $3.22, $3.3 million a year in order for Victoria to have service. We, if we can go to the next block, I can show you that we have two daily flights to Dallas-Fulworth and two daily flights to IAH or Houston Continental, which is a lot more than a lot of communities get. Most communities in the EAS service get one, one flight, I mean, they get two flights, but just to one destination. We are lucky enough to get, you know, dual destinations to two very important airports that allow to connect to anywhere in the world out of Victoria. Boutique Air has got an interline agreement and co-share with United and interline agreements with American Airlines. Why is that important? It's important because with an inner and co-share agreement, you can actually buy a ticket from Victoria to anywhere in the world in the United States, whatever destination is. You can also use your United points, whatever you get them through a credit card, or to any other methods. And you, if you are, if you have access to any of the clubs or anything that United has at any of the airports in the United States or around the world, you can still use, you have back to those facilities if you fly there. So in essence, you can buy a flight out of Victoria directly from United Airlines website. Let's go to the next slide. So what, every two years, we have to go out to bid for these airlines. And this is the time, we just received the bids on July 1st, and we got four airlines that have proposed. One of, one of the SkyWest Airlines, SkyWest Part 121 airline, which means Part 121 means it operates as a regular airline, just like American Airlines or United Airlines. So they, SkyWest has got co-chairs and interline agreements with everybody, and they do a lot of route flying for United, American, Delta, mainly out of IAH with United, United colors. They paint the aircraft just as United, so you don't feel the difference between flying a SkyWest or United. They're part of the Starlines, you can use all your benefits that you get with United through SkyWest. SkyWest, by definition, is a priority one airline and, and flies jets. What they had offered this community is a CRJ-2 with 50 passengers, two crew members, three crew members, two pilots, and a flight attendant. And they, they offer two round trips to Houston during the week and one round trip to Houston also on Saturdays and Sundays, so you get 12 round trips a week. Then we have Boutique, who is the current airline, and they have pretty much offered the same thing that, that they have right, two daily round trips to IAH, two daily round trips to DFW. Denver Connection is also a 121 airline, have a co-share with United. But, you know, given the, the two airlines providing the same service, I would say that SkyWest Airlines has got a lot of experience at Denver Air. Then we have Air Choice One that has offered pretty much what Boutique Airlines, Boutique Air has offered, but Air Choice One does not have any interline agreements with any other airlines. So I showed you this, what I wanted to show you is that airport in the last three years have gone from really poor vessels, from little airlines with single-engine aircraft or, or engine aircraft that were reciprocated, that we've been a lot of problems with. We had had a couple of problems with, with over the last two years, but nothing significant like we did in the past. We did double or the amount of payments that we did at the airport. Airport up until this year was considered a general aviation airport, and we were able to move it up to a actual non-primary status, which is a higher, higher rating of an airport under the A reporting. So as we move forward, we will have 10,000 employments, which would bring us up to a primary, which allows us to get $1 million every year from primary entitlements from the FAA. So the, the goal now is to get 10,000 employments within the next three years. And we were in a good path until COVID-19 hit, and you know, everything is slowed down on, in the airline industry. But key point to take out of this slide is the quality of the participants, the quality of the parcels compared to what we were getting four, five, and six, eight years ago. So I'm, I'm very happy. Um, so I'm, I'm very happy to, um, I'm, I'm going to present to my, um, to my airport, um, or Airport Commission on Friday at noon. You're all invited if you want to attend. Um, and I'm going to go over each individual, uh, company, uh, what the pros and cons is every one of them, so they can make an educated decision on, on which airline to choose for the next two years. And the possibility is also that we can request, uh, DOT that this would be a four-year contract rather than a two. Um, and at that point, you know, the three parties would have to be agreeable at that point, which would be a SkyWest, the airport and the DOT, and the DOT. And, uh, can we go to the next slide? So here, here it brings us back to the land development and marketing study. Um, the airport has, um, quite a bit of land available. And some of the land, as you can see, represents some buildings. But those buildings are already gone and demolished. Um, some of the buildings are still there, but they need to be demolished. But I personally had identified several parcels at the airport that can be, um, developed. And the idea is to, to join up with all the partners available. In this case, the city, EDC, or anybody else that is interested in being a partner to be able to find a way to develop these facilities. Um, uh, next slide, please. As, as you look at this slide, you, you can find this easy access, um, from, uh, you, uh, Texas 59, um, and, um, business 59. Um, but it's land that I had sat there for a long time. And you can move to the next slide anytime. And these are just, uh, slides that show the availability of land. Um, this land has sat there for a long period of time. And I, I believe the community way before my time had talked over, over what the, um, airport has and what it could offer. You know, what, 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 how great this land is. But the, the, nothing had known, or, um, at least for what I know, probably 30 years, 40 years. Um, and, and now I think with the synergy of everybody involved and wanting the city to grow and, um, looking for parcels of land that are readily available and possibly easy to, um, develop. Um, you, you know, I, I, in, in meetings that we had between the city and the county and the airport commission, uh, you know, we, we're open to get this land developed. We're open to get to the, the federal administration and get all this land, um, to be, uh, to made available for the development as a way of commercial or industrial, whatever this, uh, plan tells that we need to do with this land. And, um, you know, work together for the betterment of the city of Victoria and the county of Victoria. So as you can tell, there's large plots of land that have sit in their idle that, um, really have been housing, um, old buildings in World War II. And I think this is the time for, um, for us to work together to get this developed. And, um, for, you know, like I said, for the benefit of, of everybody in the community. We can go to the next slide. So this, this is, uh, another slide that, all this that you saw before are, you know, directly in the front of the airport. Um, this, um, slide is kind of the runways, but also has direct access from, uh, US 59 and it's a pretty large, uh, parcel, about 150 acres. Um, and it's land that is, um, readily available. And as you can see, a couple of builds, um, where it's, where you can read, uh, Victoria Animal Control. On the other side of, you have, uh, Tejas Industries and you have, um, the head cemetery over there and all that area had already, um, you know, it has water, sewer and electrical. And it's got a cul-de-sac at the end that would allow, you know, it allows people to turn around at that area. But also, um, a lot of hookups for water and sewer, um, readily available and electrical. So it's, it could be an area that can be easily developed, developed. And in working together, uh, we can this, uh, make this land available for future development. Um, as a way of, uh, you know, put it out in the market or working with, uh, with, uh, some consultant firm to, to get it, uh, developed. Uh, we can go to the next, uh, slide, please. So, so talk to, about all that land and, and all the, the availability of that and working together. I just wanted to, to point you out to this, to the economic impact of the airport. Um, this study was a couple of years ago by the, um, Department of Transportation. And it told the airport, um, on airport impacts is about 19.1 million dollar output to the community. So imagine if we can get all this land developed and all this business, uh, business is brought into the airport. And, you know, as a default to the city and the county, those numbers will be, um, migrated on that. I see airports like McKee Regional Airport where, where they, um, the output is probably close to 80 million dollars. So the airport could be, uh, a generator of, of tax generator of, uh, new businesses. And so far, what we've seen over the years, just land sitting idle. So, um, I, I would ask you and, uh, and thank you for the opportunity to present this to you. But I would have to consider that, that, um, $5,000 to get something done with this land. And once and for all, um, not talk about what we can do with this. But what we need to do with the plan after this study is done. Can we go to the next slide? So this is just kind of a representative, um, um, uh, slide. We're located in a relationship of 69 and kind of an aerial view of our airport. Let's go to the next slide. So, so as everybody knows, um, right now, we, we're having a study tells us what a runway can do. And that study, that study will start here in, in the next week or so. And it is as far as the weight bearing capacity. And that will let us know exactly what kind of aircraft we can bring to our airport and what kind of business could come potentially with those aircraft. Um, we, we have a 9100 foot runway, which is a very thing to have in comparison to the airports of the size of Victoria. Um, but we had never known exactly what kind of weight that runway, uh, can take. And that's very important because we could be sitting on the runway and taking 737, but we're not open for those kind of aircraft. Um, and if we attract, for example, a, a maintenance repair operator to be based at the airport, the majority of those, uh, MROs for large aircraft like airliners. And, um, if we're able to take the aircraft in a runway, that would open a different type of marketing for these airports. But without knowing, um, those, uh, we couldn't approach a company like that. Now, once the, um, study is done, we will know and we will market the airport in accordance to what the runway can do. But, you know, it's, it, this slide is just representing possibilities of where you can go. You know, if, if, if you have a mile or two miles, in this case, almost two miles of road, that road will take you two miles. And the other, the representation of the airplane is that, um, on, on a 9100 foot runway in an aircraft like that, where we have 7,500 mile, nautical miles of, of, um, reach, um, you can take off out of Victoria and go 7,500 nautical miles here. So you can have it, at any time, a direct flight to Europe and beyond. So that's the importance, that's how important a mile and a two miles of runway is. Can we go to the next slide?
Lenny.
Lenny. Yes, sir.
Uh, isn't that the longest runway, one of two in the state of Texas outside of major airport?
Yeah, there, there's, there's a couple in, in the state of Texas. Uh, majority of runways that you see of this, uh, mainly commercial, um, uh, commercial airports, airports, you know, like San Antonio, um, Austin, Houston, um, you know, they're, they're a little over, uh, some of them are, uh, 10,000 and above, up to 12,000. But, um, order length is pretty, pretty long for a, a type of aircraft like us. There is only two or three airports in the state of Texas that have a runway of this length. Um, and that just, uh, you know, it's a slide for you to, if you have any questions for me to, um, answer your questions.
Lenny, can you, we included it in the mo, but can you also provide a summary on what the marketing study is going to specifically look at and do?
Yeah, you know, the, the, the marketing study, uh, look at the facility that we have and what pros and cons are and what needs to be done, um, in order to get it ready, you know, for development. It would also look at, you know, all utilities. They would look at the market. What is it that the airport needs to be, needs to be doing in order to attract, uh, industry? And more importantly, what kind of industry is the airport compatible with? What is that, that, the niche of the airport is at this point, you know? Because we don't know, is it, is it commercial that we want to go? Or is it industrial or is it a mix of both industrial and commercial development? Um, and after, you know, after, it, it also get all the land that is available. Um, make sure that every parcel that is available has a representation of, or, or its needs and how ready it is in order to be developed. Uh, and it will present us with a marketing, uh, plan, how we need to get out and market this, uh, this land. Um, and what we need to do in order to, um, to get some of this land developed. So, um,
Is it a goal to, to put us in a position where we can target our marketing more effectively?
Too, yeah, correct.
We're not just cast net once we're studying.
No, we're not, you know, it's, it's going to be pretty specific of what we need to do.
What, what's viable for that, uh, for that airport to get serious about.
Correct. And that's what I was saying, you know, it will find the specific niche for this land. You know, something that we can go out and market to, not just be all over the place, trying to get all kinds of different industries to come in here.
And I think another distinction in many of the master plans, things that the FAA has submitted in the past, don't really focus a lot on, on, uh, development outside, so to speak, at the airport. They're mainly concerned with the actual aviation parts of the airport. And not, they don't really deal with, uh, what, what value there is, uh, to the potential of the land there.
That's correct. The plan for an airport, uh, mainly is because of runways, taxiways and, and, um, access to the main terminal. It, it, it pretty much tells you a little bit about development of the airside. But in, most importantly, what a map for America, for an airport is looking for is, um, a CIP for your runways and taxiways and apron and what your needs are going to be over this 10 years. Um, for that airport and, and it, it, it completely, 99% of it is focused on the airside.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is the airport currently within the city limits?
No, it is not at the time. It is not in, inside the city limits.
So then the follow-up is, is it directly contiguous so that it could be annexed? Or is there space between the city limits and the airport?
We've, um, we've looked at that, this, this is speaking. Um, there would be an opportunity, um, if, if we desire to go that route. It's contiguous sense that city limits are right on the side of Business 59. Um, so we would have to cross Business 59 to get to the airport. Um, but it would be something that would be doable. Um, we really looked at this more so when there, you may recall conversations about UHV, um, developing property, uh, that they were donated just south of the airport. Uh, where there was also some land donated to the zoo. I don't know how familiar you are with that, and, and I can provide more details on that later. But long story short, when we were looking at, at some of the projects associated with UHV, um, we looked at, at what annexation would look for the area. And the same would apply to the airport in terms of our city limits are just on the other side of Business 59.
Thank you.
I have a question for Lenny. Uh, Lenny, in that study, and maybe not in this study, but were contemplating using some of that land, maybe international, uh, companies to come in and build in that property?
And yes, we, we would contemplate and, you know, if it is within what the study recommends, we would contemplate that at least.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, guys. If you have any questions, just, uh, you know, be free to, to give me a call anytime.
Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
This is an action item?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to accept item E1.
Second.
The motion and second to accept that E1. Is there any further discussion from council? Hearing that call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Say. Did I hear a, a nay or was that just noise? Hello?
It must have just been noise.
Okay, so it was approved. Okay, can we move on to item E2, please?
Item E2 is a resolution to approve early termination of a contract with Cersei Dynex.
Dana will be making this, uh, presentation.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm bringing forward a proposal to terminate our current contract with the library's software system, or we also call it a graded, um, library system, so that I can enter into an agreement with a new bidder, which will allow us for cost savings and organizational efficiencies. James, could you move to the next slide, please? So I wanted to give you a little bit of a history out the library's integrated library system and what's been going on. We were first computerized at the library sometime between 1980 and 82. That's when our first software system was installed. We then moved into a shared library system with the Victoria College UHV library from 1982 to 2008. Then 2008, we, the EPL on its own entered into a five-year contract with Cersei Dynex. And we hosted the data, our system on a server in our building. Then in 2013, we moved to offsite posting of our data and agreed to a three-year contract with Cersei Dynex. And in 20, uh, November 2016, we began the five-year contract with Cersei Dynex. Next slide, please. So the reasons I recommend changing software providers include that under our current provider, we're consistently, uh, facing additional charges requesting help to fix problems. Unable, they are unable or unwilling to make needed changes for us. And the business focus for that company is our current provider is really on larger libraries with de- dedicated full-time IT, um, personnel on staff. With the new provider, we can focus on the needs of our size of library, a medium-sized library, and they're more adaptable to our changing needs. There would be cost savings on the annual fees, initial migration. And there are fewer costs for training and updates and no penalty for leaving the agreement at any time. In addition, there's going to be some easier integration between our library catalog and our other electronic services, such as our EBS and our databases. And would be more customer friendly with some additional features, just some online bill payment option at no extra cost. Next slide, please. So the big reason for terminating our current track and moving to a new provider is the cost savings, which I'm showing here at through 2022. So the top part of this table shows the cost to break contract one year early versus the bottom part of keeping on track to the end of our current five-year agreement. So I'm recommending that we break the contract at a cost of $10,500 approximately in fiscal year 2021, followed by a $16,000 savings in fiscal year 2022 and a cumulative savings of $5,600. Followed by a sixteen thousand dollars savings in fiscal year twenty twenty-two and a cumulative savings of fifty-six hundred dollars. Um, at the bottom, I stated that year to year following the migration, our annual cost will be approximately twenty-five thousand dollars a year. If you compare what we'd be paying to our new provider versus the old provider. Next slide, please. So if we move forward with the early termination, we would follow approximately this timeline. So, or before August thirtieth, we would notify our current provider intent to terminate the current contract. We would then execute a contract with our new software vendor. And begin, um, the migration to the new software around October first. Early term fees and the payment to our new vendor occur in November as part of the proposed the year twenty twenty-one budget, budget year. And our current vendor contract would expire in November, November thirtieth. We should have our new system up and running well before that date. The process should be completed well before the end of this year. Next slide, please. So to review my proposal, we do have a long history with our current provider. But we are in at this time software that is more adaptable to meet our needs, our customer needs. And it's tailored to our library and our technical capabilities. We would also see a quick turnaround for the migration. And in our talks with the new provider, they said they could load our data in twenty-four hours and have it up and running. We have, um, already been making testing the, uh, a new system. And breaking the contract one year early will create sixteen thousand dollars in savings and fifty hundred dollars in cumulative savings by fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Additional cost benefits include a reduction in annual fees and ability to break the contract in the future with no penalty. So are there any questions?
Is there requiring any hardware upgrade or anything?
No, it does, um, as far as, we don't have a server that we have to, you know, hold any information locally. They hold our data on two different servers, actually on the east coast and the coast. In case there's like a breakdown on the east coast side and they switch over to the west coast. So it's all offsite.
There'll be a jam when you get after both of the data for you. It is all online.
Right, there would be a period of time where you, you would have access to both, um, systems, both products during, like, October, November.
What type of time is going to be required to migrate?
Um, it's not going to be a lot of it. We've already done kind of a trial migration to see, uh, what would happen with this new provider. And it was an overnight process. We had to do a little bit of cleanup, but most of our data right now is fairly clean. So it's really not a lot of staff time, um, through that migration process. There is going to be some staff time for us to learn the new system. But they do provide us with some training videos and to play with the data before we go live.
Can you go back to that slide that shows the cost savings, the spreadsheet? So the thirty thousand, hundred and eighty-five dollar charge is integration plus software of fourteen five twenty-five?
That's correct. There's addition cost plus your annual fee.
We're going from really almost forty thousand dollars to fourteen five is what you're showing that says.
That's correct.
And why do we want to pull it forward and spend more money in this next fiscal year when we have budget issues as opposed to just waiting and not saving the fifty-six hundred dollar?
It sounded like it was some logistics, the software itself as well. Some flexibility of this new company, I think she said. The existing company isn't really set up to, uh, address our needs and they're not able to make some of the changes. It sounded like they were being proactive to something that's going to happen anyway.
It is that, but it's also, you know, that, that cost savings over the long term that we're looking at does allow us to make this change and make some, I guess, some abilities to do some of the things like the online bill pay or able to, um, communicate with our customers better via just an email, much easier. So those are some of the benefits from that side, but also the cost savings over the, um, the year.
So in next year's budget presentation, your budget would be reduced.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear everything.
That's correct, Kelly, when the budget would be reduced in the, in the future budget presentations to reflect the savings. Unless there were other, uh, improvements to the service that we were to add with your approval in the future.
Yeah, I'm always nervous about saying, let's spend more money there so we can save money next year. And there are two years and two different votes and ten different councils.
Yes, sir. Ultimately, here we have, uh, the library staff has, has found a better product at a better price. And by doing this early, we do ultimately save money in the long run.
As this is an act item, I move that we approve this, this item, I believe it's E two.
Well, Miss, um, or this for Dana and Thomas. I, I keep on the unwillingness and inability for Cersei Dynex to pro- provide uh, some support or do some things for the library. And I was questioning if that's somewhat a breach of contract? And would that allow us to get out the buyout? I, I know you're specifically with their contract, I didn't know if you could speak to that.
I can speak to that. Uh, Mr. Farrell and I went through some of the library's concerns, uh, this morning and yesterday afternoon, specifically looking at the terms in the contract and whether or not that would rise to the level of breach. And we do not believe it rises to the level of breach because of the exclusions that are in the contract with regards to additional services. Um, you know, they may be willing to provide those services for an additional fee. But if we aren't willing to pay the fee, it's not breach of contract if they aren't providing.
Yes.
And, and just, just to add on to that, you know, we're, we're learning a lot as we go. Uh, we've learned and Thomas can probably, uh, attest to this is that, you know, we've got a lot of contracts that have been in existence for many years. And so as some of these new contracts be, and we have an opportunity to have a more robust conversation, we go with departments. Um, they're being stronger. Um, the contract specifically, um, did not have specific triggers, the whole of service, you know, or any of those. Um, so we'll make sure that moving forward for contracts that have a custom service piece, that we make them stronger. So that if we do have customer service issues, it becomes a breach of contract. Um, but currently the way this contract is written, it doesn't stipulate specific deliverables on response and things of nature.
I, I would agree with that, and I would go a step further, uh, Mr. Gar, to say that we actually have, already have a draft of the contract for the new provider. Should council choose to go forward with this direction. We've already been reviewing that contract and analyzing it. It is a much more attractive contract and we are definitely tightening up some of the, uh, some of those concerns.
What is the length of the contract?
With the new provider?
Yes.
What they do is that they, um, they guarantee the price for three years. And then they review that again at the end of years. And my understanding with them is that we can pull out at any time with no penalty.
That's correct. My understanding of the contract that we have looked at is that it is essentially a year-by-year contract. It gets renewed every year, um, by the, the, um, by the party, we can terminate it at any time. So it's essentially one year at a time.
Does it have a clause in here about it can raise their fees like a certain percentage?
Not for the first three years, ma'am.
And it doesn't rest anything further than three years, just the first three years?
I'm not sure of the answer to that. Um, Mike, but I certainly can have the answer for you at the time that we bring that contract back for you.
And we also know that they do review kind of what they base their costs on our, um, our population of our service area and the number of users or library cardholders that we have. So they review that also to determine a cost.
Are you talking about the cost in three years?
Yes.
Not. Okay.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And I can, any further discussion? Be that I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 So I think that was the announcement and tighten up those contracts, Mr. Gush.
Sir, thank you.
All right. I believe now we move on, that's all of our, uh, act items for council. I think we move now in city manager reports.
Uh, yes, sir. Today, we're going to have my April, uh, provide an update to you on some of our economic related, uh, corporations or entities. Um, some of you may recall in June of last year, when I gave an overview presentation on economic development. I noted the existence of certain corporations that have been inactive for quite, inactive for quite some time. And so we've been working on, on strategizing on how to reinvigorate, get them more, uh, active, if you will. And they'll discuss a little bit on, on what that plan is moving forward. So Mike.
Thank you, uh, hey, Susan, I will let April pick it off.
Well, good evening, mayor and council. Mike and I will be speaking about three different corporations the city Victoria has to help promote economic development. Throughout the past year, we've been bringing appointments and reappointments to the council. I've begun giving you brief presentations on the history, purpose and compositions of the board or commission. Staff believe that providing better understanding of the boards and commissions would allow the council to appoint the best possible candidates to those boards and commissions. The three corporation boards that we will speak about tonight have offered us the opportunity to also provide a more in-depth look at how these boards can be used for, as economic, economic development tools and, and, um, to reactivate those after many years of, of being dormant.
Thank you, April, mayor and council. As you know, the twenty thirty-five comp plan calls for the city to promote more economic development. And that's to improve quality of life and make Victoria a destination city. So one thing we found out, mayor and council, is that we have several tools or corporations that we are not currently using. So what we would like to do is to reconstitute, uh, these corporations to help us be more intentional about economic development. Again, we are looking at ways or tools that could help us be more proactive, more intentional when it comes to economic development. So the three corporations that we currently have that are somewhat dormant are one, the Victoria Development Commission or Corporation, sometimes you call it B D C. The second one is the Victoria Health Facilities Development Corporation. And the third is the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation. Next slide, please. So the first one I want to talk about is the Victoria Development Commission. Next slide. So the Victoria Development Commission or B D C was created back in nineteen ninety-two as a public nonprofit. And that was to promote commercial, industrial and manufacturing enterprises by issuing bonds on behalf of private entities. Now, the commission or the city does not lend its credit. So rather, all we are doing essentially is serving as a conduit, allowing private entities to finance projects on a tax exempt basis. So the bonds are sold strictly on the credit of the borrower. There's no impact of the city. And the borrower is responsible for repaying the debt. So there are three types of projects that private entities can be financed on a tax exempt basis. The first one is the small issue manufacturing industry projects. Those are manufacturing industries that are, where the bond amount is less than ten million. The second one is the solid waste disposal, water, sewer, wastewater treatment types of projects. And the third are projects to promote transportation projects like the airport, the port, the docks. So the B D C can be a very important tool to help us with economic development. Next slide, please. So you would ask, mayor and council, how does this work? How does it work? So the way it works, and I guess some of you know how it works, is that a borrower or a private entity would submit an application, of course, with an application fee, requesting the commission to issue obligations or bonds on his behalf. So the app, so once we receive the application, the application is then reviewed by our bond counsel and the financial advisor for eligibility. The third step is that if it's recommended for approval by the city manager's office and the finance director, the application is then presented to the commission for approval and then to city council for consideration. Then after council approves it through a resolution, the commission then conducts a public hearing to give public notice and receive public comments. Then after that, the commission requests bond allocations on the state. And then upon approval from the state, the bonds are sold. Next slide, please. So since, um, the creation of the B D C in nineteen eighty-two, the B D C has issued several industrial revenue bonds, sometimes you call them R R Bs, on behalf of private entities. The first one was the H E B project. So in nineteen eighty-three, B D C, the Victoria Development Commission, issued a three-point-seven-million-dollar bond on behalf of an H E B to build the store at thirteen oh one Houston Highway. And the current location is actually, uh, it's where, uh, Little Caesar's is currently located. So H E B ultimately demolished it and moved it to the current location. The second project is the Gulf Coast Paper Project. Back in nineteen eighty-three, the B D C issued one point two million in bonds on behalf of Gulf Coast Paper to construct a small manufacturing facility at thirty-seven oh five Houston Highway. Next slide, please. And the third one is the Toda Motel. In nineteen eighty-four, the B D C issued two-point-six-million-dollar bond on behalf of Toda Motel to construct the Remada, uh, Remada End Hotel at thirty-nine oh one Houston Highway. The hotel is now the America's Best Value Inn in Suites. Next slide. So let's talk now about the B D C board composition and I'll let April cover it.
So the B D C board has three, three directors and they all must be members of the city council. Uh, they'll serve two-year terms, um, and you may be reappointed. The term cannot exceed the period for which the director shall be a public official for the city of Victoria. Next slide, please. The current members are Councilman Bocknight, Mayor Pro Tim Solis and Councilman Andrew Young. And we did those appointments as, uh, Mr. Gartha mentioned, the last June. So those appointments are good until June twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please.
Thank you, April. So staff is recommending that the city reactivate or reconstitute the BDC. And begin to receive applications from private entities. So why do we want to reactivate the BDC? Go back, please. One is that the commission is currently active and is in good standing with the Secretary of State. But the commission hasn't met in quite a while. The second is that by reactivating the BDC, it will help us implement the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Which is really one of the key things that you have asked us to do. Implement the 2035 Plan. And third, it will enable the city to attract suppliers specifically or Caterpillar and other manufacturers to locate in the city. As you know, there are several pad sites adjacent to Caterpillar that are being looked at by various manufacturers. So the BDC could be an instrument that could be used to help finance the project.
So where do we go from here? The next step would be to hold a commission meeting. Please stay on that slide. Thank you. To hold a commission meeting to elect officers from those three individuals currently on the board. We would update our records with the Secretary of State and then develop and approve certain policies and then begin receiving applications. We would begin using the BDC to promote economic development in the City of Victoria and in our area.
Thank you, April.
Let's take, let's, let's take them one at a time because it's a lot of information. And so I think it'd be appropriate to open up for, for questions, comments, you know, et cetera. From so specific related to the BDC before we move on to the next one.
Okay. Does council have any questions? Also, we have Gilbert, Raina, and Dusty Taylor, our finance.
Bond.
Bond counsel to answer any questions that you might have.
Our financial advisor, not bond counsel. Don't promote, don't promote them yet.
Not yet.
I guess you're opening it up for questions. I said the three projects that were listed were all on Houston Highway. Is that coincidence or are there some limitations on where these projects could be located?
I believe that's a coincidence, Councilwoman. There's no limitation or, or specific areas where they, they can be financed.
Yeah. And I think, and I think if we were to go back and look at the development pattern of the city and what it looked like in the eighties. That would have been the area of growth and expansion at that time.
Yeah, that's probably pre-mall days or pretty close to it.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
I'll just.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. As an officer or as a member of this committee or commission. Would the properties that the city has right now, say like Delante or anything else, would that be something that we would recommend? Or would it be just something specific to the industry and they would take the side of whatever they want?
So. Mike, I saw you were going to answer the question. Go for it.
So, well, yes, potentially, but for the BDC, it would have to be to meet those three criteria. One is the, it has to be for manufacturing or industrial sites. And the second criteria is that it has to be for solid waste, water treatment plants and so forth. And the third is for airport ports or other types of transportation projects. So it could be, but it has to meet the criteria.
Okay. And going back to the airport, it would only help bring in a new service or to develop some of those plots that Lenny was talking about?
Yeah, the answer is yes, it could.
Yeah, the answer, the answer is that it would be focused on developing the parcels of land that Lenny, that Lenny showed. I don't know, I don't know if Gilbert or Thomas, whilst he knows the answer to the question of, if project would have to be inside city limits or not.
It's my understanding it has to be within city limits.
Okay. So we would have that limitation. Eventually, one of the conversations that, that would, would be had with the actual commission. You know, under this bullet point of next steps where it's about developing policies. That's where you can have a conversations about what priority areas council has. So it, the, the process of a lot of these studies and a lot of actions that we're taking are very intentional. So if we think back to the study that it is doing that has identified undeveloped areas of our community. Idea is how can we develop undeveloped areas in our community? And one thing that we could do is say, you know, we're willing to offer this opportunity if you're within geographical area as, as, as a, as an example. You could open it up to all city limits or limit, or however we wanted to, to design an approach to stir up development in certain parts of town. But those should be conversations that would be had with the commission.
That's good.
Yeah. The only thing I was going to add earlier is that, you know, clearly this is a tool that's been sitting in our back pocket, in our back pocket, you know, for a very long time. And so as we look to add resources, and obviously Mike was one of those resources. We're only going to find more of these. You know, we're going to find more opportunities for us to. And realize that the city has played a more direct role in economic development in the past. And somehow that focus faded. And so we're trying to re-bring back that this.
Is the emphasis of the, of the fact that it's in the city, is that part of corporation bylaws? Or is that in, in, by the state law?
As I said, because the composition is council. Council created the commission. Now, the question I have, which I should have said earlier, is the ETJ. Not sure about that answer, but I can find out.
Well, that's, all we're asking tonight to do is just reconstitute the commission, let the commission reform. And then, and then work through these issues themselves.
Right.
And bring back to, so they understand how the, how it's functioned is what I would guess. Is let the commission look all of these issues and see if it, if it would require bylaw changes. If that's something they choose to do or recommend, but I'd let that commission do its job.
Absolutely. Mayor, I've been working with several of our city boards on a similar process, relooking, redoing their bylaws and getting the organizations up to date. And certainly we would go through a similar process with these boards and we would further explore those questions at that time. I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you today about where that restriction might come from.
I trust, one last thing I can add here to is that you got to remember that if we're selling bonds, then council has that authority. You can't. So the question is, is that, is the law allowing the council sell bond for the city itself? That's, as it can do it. So that, that's the whole issue. So it's not like the bylaw technically, it's a state federal law too as well.
Well, I think the commission, I, I trust the commission there to look into all those issues and then. Bring back, if they, if they deem it necessary to, or they recommend to change the bylaws to make them more effective. I, I trust that commission to do that job.
Right. And, and, and really the, the prime point of today's presentation is to further educate council on these tools and resources. And hopefully continue to get support as we continue to invest staff time and energy in proceeding, utilizing some of these tools. You know, we obviously, this is still a work in progress. And so I agree with mayor that, you know, as the commission meets, you know, we'll, we'll figure out more details and obviously we'll keep council informed of it. You know, through city managers' reports or otherwise.
Right. And so if, if a project were identified, I think I saw something somewhere about bonds. And those bonds would be something that would be repaid with money available to the city, meaning tax money. The city, not from the county or not the ETJ. I guess that, that whole consideration and looking at where the enabling came from to this entity.
That's not what I understood. I thought the entity issues the bonds, they took the exemption from us. They're responsible for it. It doesn't go on our service or anything.
That's correct.
That's correct. That's correct.
Just letting them, but letting their investors earn their money back without taxes on it.
And also the private entity is responsible for paying back the bond.
Okay.
So, so really all we do is we're just the, right? We help set it all up. And it's kind of an easy win for us if we can set it up for somebody. Okay. Karen, Mike?
Okay. Next slide, please. So, Council, the next corporation we would like to reconstitute is the Victoria Health Facilities Development Corporation. Next slide. So the Health Facilities Development Corporation was founded back in April 1983. As a public nonprofit to develop healthcare facilities by issuing bonds on behalf of hospitals and private entities. Same as before or the previous commission, the corporation does not lend its credit or the city's credit. Rather, it simply acts as a conduit, allowing borrowers or private entities to finance projects on a tax exempt basis. The bonds are sold strictly on the credit of the borrower or the private entity. And the borrower is responsible for repaying the debt, not the city. Next slide. So you ask, well, how does this work? Again, it's the same process as the, the BDC. The borrower again would submit, or the private entity would submit an application with an application fee. To the Facilities Corporation to issue applications or bonds. Then the application is then reviewed by the bond counsel and financial advisor for eligibility. Then with the city manager's approval, as well as the finance director, the application is presented to the corporation for approval and then to city council. So once city council approves it through an inducement resolution. The Facilities Development Corporation can conduct a public hearing to give public notice and receive comments. And then the Development Corporation can request bond allocation from the state and essentially begin the project and sell the bonds. Next slide. So since the Health Facilities Development Corporation was created in 1983. The VHDC has issued two revenue bonds. It only did two projects. The first one was the Victorian Nursing Center Project and that was in 1984. When it issued a $2.5 million bond on behalf of Victorian Nursing Center. To construct a nursing home facility at 501 East Lockspur Street. Which is essentially back to Ethelie Tracy Park. The second project is the Warm Springs Rehab Foundation Project. And that was done in 1997 where the corporation issued a $4 million bond. To construct the Warm Springs Rehab Center at 102 Medical Drive. Now that facility is currently your post-acute medical specialist or PAM. Next slide.
Okay. So now we'll talk about the board composition of the VHFC. Now there are three directors on this board as well. All must be members of the council. They serve two-year terms and they may be reappointed. The term of any, any director again shall not exceed the period for which they're a public official of the city. Next slide, please. So currently on this board appointed are Councilman De La Garza, Councilwoman Scott, and Councilman Young. Those appointments did expire last month in anticipation of, of those appointments prompted this entire presentation. So we will be bringing back either reappointments or, or, or different appointments if, if you should choose, council, at the next meeting on the 21st. Next slide, please.
So again, staff is recommending that the, that the city council support staff request to reactivate or reconstitute. The Health Facilities Development Corporation and receive applications from private entities. Again, the corporation is in good standing with the Secretary of State and, but it has not met in quite a while. So it will also help us implement the 2035 Plan, which calls for the city to be the medical hub for the region. So this is very important because I think we definitely have an opportunity when it comes to economic development for this city to be that medical hub. So the hope is that we can use the Facilities Corporation to help us achieve that. To have more hospitals or medical facilities to locate in the city.
So the next steps for this corporation would be to appoint or reappoint board members, which will happen at the, again, at the July 21st meeting. And we would then need to hold a meeting to elect officers, update our records to the Secretary of State, and begin using the corporation to promote economic development.
Any questions on this, on the Health Facilities Development Corporation before we move to the next one?
This be used for the Verma project, Dr. Vermo?
The answer is yes. It could be used for Dr. Vermo's project.
But at that point.
Go ahead, Susan.
I was just, I mean, at that point, that would be up to, that'd be up to them if they, if they wanted to submit a record. You know, outline in the process that, that Mike went through a little, a little ago. You know, who knows how it'll take for us to, you know, restructure, reset up, you know, that type of stuff and. There, you know. Previous conversations we've had about that project, you know, we're working a different angle to support that project. And so it may or may not play a role with this, considering working other avenues to make that project happen. Which to that end, Mike will be providing an update on that project in accordance with our executive session. At the next council meeting on July 21st.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I would think that anything we could do to promote medical facility, I don't know the exact numbers, but my instinct tell me that. In terms of employment in Victoria. Paired with the school district being number one, I think that our medical community is one of our largest industries in our entire city. And extremely valuable to, to the people of the city.
Okay.
Okay. Next slide, please.
Yep, Karen. This is the exciting one. We save the best for last.
Next slide. Okay. So yes, indeed, hey Susan, we saved the best for last. This is the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation. Next slide. So the Housing Finance Corporation was created back in 1979. As a public nonprofit to facilitate development of residential housing. That will provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing to low and moderate income persons. By issuing mortgage bonds on behalf of developers, lending institutions, and private entities. So that's what it was created for back in 1979. So it also has the authority to make or acquire home mortgages and to make loans to lending institutions. Just like the previous two corporations, this corporation does not lend its credit or does not lend the. or does not lend the city's credit. Rather, it simply acts as a conduit allowing banks, private entities to finance projects on a tax exempt basis. The bonds are sold again strictly on the credit of the borrower or the private entity, not the credit of the city. And the borrower is responsible for repaying the debt, not the city. Next slide. So how does it work? I don't want to repeat this again. This, it works the same way as the previous two. So again, the private entity has to submit an application with an application fee.
You just said you weren't going to repeat yourself.
Next slide. So since the creation of the Housing Finance Corporation has issued one mortgage revenue bond, and that was done back in nineteen eighty, and that was for $23.8 million. So the bond provided funding to six local banks to provide low-interest mortgage loans to low and moderate income persons. So the six banks that received the funds were Victoria Federal Savings and Loan, American Bank of Commerce, South Texas Savings Association, Victoria Banking Trust, First Victoria National and Quetle Federal Savings and Loan Association. So altogether, nearly four hundred individuals or families received low-interest mortgage loans from this bond funding. So in nineteen ninety-two though, the Housing Finance Corporation took advantage of low interest rates and refinanced or did a refunding or they refunded the original issuance, which resulted in a $2.5 million windfall for the corporation. Next slide.
So after that refinancing, there was a change in purpose to this Housing Finance Corporation. They kept the same name, but they, they used, they spent the, to spend the $2.5 million windfall. In nineteen ninety-four, the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation changed its purpose from providing residential housing opportunities to actually being more of just a 501(c)(3). So they organized solely for the purpose of, to provide charitable and educational purposes within the meaning of section 501(c)(3) of the International Revenue Code. So originally that, that section of the articles was closer to what Mike mentioned in the, in the, under the history where they were specifically acquiring mortgage loans and doing the powers that were enumerated to them under the Act of Victoria Housing Finance, or the Texas Housing Finance Corporation in nineteen seventy-nine. So they completely changed their purpose and used that $2.5 million windfall in other ways. So next slide please. The projects they did after nineteen ninety-four still did include a little bit of housing work, but not nearly as much money was spent. So they did some work in the Will Rogers Terrace and Queen City Affordable Housing and Parks projects. They did many parks projects around the city. They did community roads and parking lots. They did some fire and public safety projects and some library projects. Next slide please. So the board and composition of this one, again, in three members, all must be council members. And they're appointed for six-year terms. This one has really long terms and they may be reappointed. So currently, the members are Councilman Bonnight, Councilman De La Garza, and former mayor Paul Phlosic is still named on that board. So we do need to remedy that. Next slide please.
Thank you. Go ahead, April.
So the recommendations and next steps for this particular corporation are to facilitate the development of workforce housing and increase ownership opportunities. And staff is recommending the following. To dissolve the current Victoria Housing Finance Corporation and create a new Housing Finance Corporation that is organized solely to carry out the original purposes of the corporation. So back to when it was originally created, those original articles. So the next step would be to possibly convene a meeting of the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation and vote to dissolve it. Then the city council would be asked to create a new Victoria Housing Finance Corporation and return to the original mission and functions. We would then appoint or reappoint members to that new corporation, hold a meeting to elect officers, update the records with the Secretary of State and begin using that new Housing Finance Corporation to promote housing and economic development in Victoria.
But one question, in its original mission, could it, could it help develop, finance their projects?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the entire question.
Could it help developers? Finance their projects?
The answer, the answer is yes, Mr. Mayor. It could help developers finance the project.
In other words, you could, you could potentially say for a developer that could give the leverage they need in lieu of us putting in utilities or sharing in utilities or something, that could be a possibility. The one thing I can tell you is that the nineteen eighties were the largest expansion of housing that I've seen in Victoria. And it happened even during a time when there were downturns in the economy. And the ability to offer those low-interest loans is huge because I can remember the time when, when mortgage loans were twelve, fourteen, sixteen cents compared to what we have today. So I would suspect that those four hundred people that took the opportunity in the eighties did so because without it, they probably would have had a hard time entering into mortgages. So. So I think that's definitely is to get back to its original mission.
Right. And, and I think one of the big takeaways of this, of course, is not only the fact we want to update all the bylaws, the structures, you know, the whole approach, but we want to actually promote having these tools, right? We want to actually get to the point where we have all this information on our websites where, you know, VC and VSTDC and anybody else, you know, that might be trying to chase down different projects are familiar with it. I don't know to what extent BDC is familiar with these tools. I don't know to what extent, you know, some of our other economic development partners are familiar with these tools because they just haven't been used in such a long time. And so it's, it's going to necessitate staff time to go down the path of edging our partners, promoting them, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's why it's important to get your plan, you know, early in the process to ensure that you know what we're doing and that you know how these tools can help us achieve any of the goals that we all have.
Well, if we're going to be serious economic development, we need all the tools we can have.
Okay, next slide.
Does anybody have any, any, any questions on either the Housing Finance Corporation or any of the others?
I have a question. To get back to the meetings, or is it something y'all are going to set up? Or do we, as the committee or the commission get together?
No, we'll, we'll coordinate that. You know, one of the things that, the goals that we have for the city secretary's office is to play more of an active role in managing our boards and commissions. And so expect to see April more involved with communicating with you about these boards specifically. But just in general, more involved with our boards and commissions. Recall, we recently got new software that helps us centralize all of our agendas and minutes and all of that sort of stuff. And so we'll take care of all that stuff.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Well, if you, if you don't have any other questions associated with this presentation, that would wrap it up, I think, Mike, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's all the city managers reported out for this evening, Mayor.
Okay, then I guess we're done. Other than wishing we were all together in the same room. You know, I miss that a lot, but we do what we have to do. And thank everybody. And if no other business before council, I will hereby adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.